For our two members, maybe a second longer to join us. I know they're here. I've seen them. But thank you all for being here this evening and taking this time out of your busy schedules to be a part of this, this meeting and this process. Okay. Without further ado, we will begin. I'd like to reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James C. County School Board. And as we do, Ms. Aller, if you can multitask, whoop, we're not on to you yet. If I can have a member certify closed session for us?
Mr. Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. All right. All right.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Hi.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Hi.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hundley.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell. And Mrs. Young.
Aye.
And Dr. Beers.
And that's an aye from me, Ms. Aller. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a member who would provide a motion to approve our agenda as presented this evening?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Any discussion on our agenda? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hundley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Okay. It's at this time in our meeting that we recognize the flag. I would like to ask special guests this evening to come forward. This is Captain Christopher Horgan, commanding officer of the Naval Weapons Station Yorktown, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. He assumed the duties that, I think he's ready for it, the duties at Naval Weapons Station Yorktown, September 24, 2021. And we thank you for your service, sir. All rise, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right. Move on to our announcements and superintendent report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This week is Public School Volunteer Week, and I want to take a moment to thank everyone who volunteers their time and talent to WJCC schools. In just a few moments, we will recognize our Volunteers of the Year. They represent just a handful of the many generous individuals from our community who support our students and staff. Thank you for all that you do. April is month of the military child, and our schools have chosen various ways to show support for the military children in our community. One way our schools are supporting these students is by participating in Purple Up for Military Kids. So please join us on wearing purple tomorrow, April 19th, as we recognize the unique and challenging experiences that military children face. Last week, more than 700 economics and personal finance students from all three high schools had the opportunity to practice their interview skills with area business leaders and professionals during the four-day mock interview event. About 100 of our region's business, education, and community leaders from dozens of organizations invested their time in our students. Following one-on-one interviews, students also gained direct feedback on their resumes. This experience helped students prepare for future job or college interviews. I interviewed four students myself, and they were all excellent. Thanks to our partners for helping us make this event such an incredible success. And finally, tonight, special education students at Lafayette High School are getting hands-on cooking experience, making healthy snacks while practicing reading, math, science, and life skills. Thanks to the WJCC Schools Foundation for the Innovative Learning Grant that brought this project to life. Let's take a look.
Today, my students and I are making soft pretzels. It's one of their favorite recipes. It's a lot of fun because they get their hands really dirty. But the granted for us is that we're able to integrate a lot of the academic portions. So you're really embedding all four core subjects in cooking. We're doing reading aloud. We are problem solving. We're looking at different solutions so that we have science. They're actually seeing why fractions are important. Following directions is embedded into everything we do. If we don't follow recipes step by step, we are not going to do the recipe in whole, and we're not going to be able to actually have what we want at the end for the product. But really, this is going to set them up for success. They are actually using these recipes and cooking at home.
I tried the ham and cheese wrap at home, and my parents loved it.
The value in making healthy snacks is really just giving students the ability to give them healthy alternatives. And instead of using butter, we're using eggs, which gives the students protein as well. We're using whole wheat flour. That's primarily what we use in the classroom, and they've really enjoyed it.
I cook in Snyder's class. I can learn how to cook things that are healthy for me.
We want them to have a full and efficient life, and healthy and satisfied, and cooking shows them so many more things than just a couple of recipes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. My daughter had her mock interview this week, and I asked her how it went, and she said it went fantastic. So well that this was a representative from, I believe, Centerra, that this individual said, "You ought to come work for us." So I was a proud dad. So thank you. Thank you, and your wonderful, your team here at War Hill. We'll move on to board member reports. Any board members? Yes, Ms. Hundley?
Yes, I have one for CAC, which is Special Ed Advisory Council. First of all, they wanted to thank you, Mr. Dowell, for recognizing all their hard work. We already have a chair and vice chair that was nominated at our last meeting. They're working on the annual report, which will come to us in June. Also, we had three principals come, one from Laurel Lane, one from Berkeley, and one from Lafayette, to talk about the audit that was done. And the common theme was that for all three levels was the master schedule, really making sure that that gets worked out to benefit all students and having appropriate staff development. And they are going to take their long- and short-term goals and infuse them into their school improvement plans. Also, we launched our first family newsletter, and it had 4,500 views. And also, we're working on the exceptional games. You'll be hearing more about that. It'll be at Jamestown High School on June 1st from 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock. Also, we received a grant for rising sixth graders to orient them into middle school. And there'll be five sessions. They will start in May and end in September. And if, let's see, we'll continue to plan great presentations for March Disability Month. We had great things going on last month, and we're going to just make sure that we continue with that next year. And let's see, we also are working on grading considerations. So there was a presentation on that with great research and findings, and that task force is getting ready to write up their recommendations. Our next meeting will be May 11th. It's welcome to people that would like to come. It will be in the annex, and it starts at 6:30. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Any other reports? Ms. Young?
Right, yes. Thank you. I hope you've all eaten. That's all I can say, because during our March meeting for New Horizons, they prepared a meal for us. And I just want to give you a sampling of what was on there. Fresh tomato and mozzarella crostini, antipasto salad, eggplant Parmesan, chicken piccata, pancetta crusted beef tenderloins, and then they had a side dish of sauteed green beans with roasted garlic, and red bliss potatoes. And the dessert was tiramisu. And this was presented by the students at New Horizons that are in the cooking program. And Jamestown High School, we had a student, his name is Chris Kasab, who was the sous chef, and they did an excellent job. They served us meals. They, I can't tell you how delicious it was. Nobody wanted to go to the meeting after that. And we were actually pretty, probably should have gone home and taken a nap. The other thing that happened that night, they told us the number of students that had been accepted into different culinary schools, and there were five students going to the Culinary Institute of America, and Mr. Kasab was one of them, which is pretty, pretty amazing. We also had a young lady that I, it was so far above my head, I probably won't explain it very well, but is working with a research person at, I think at Howard University, and was doing just some amazing things with data, and she's only a high school student. And I just went, wow, they're doing analyzing, they're learning how to code, they're learning how to take scientific research and turn it into something that can actually be used. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Donner?
So I had the opportunity to go to the Career Ready Advisory Committee meeting in March, and you saw the mock interview event. There's also a Health Careers Day that is upcoming later this week, and an employment event, and a CTE event. So lots of things that are happening. I want to acknowledge that we have so many different awards that our students are winning, and I'll try to, if you will indulge me, I'd like to just share some of them. But there was a TSA Tidewater Regionals, and so we had Carter Workman from Lafayette, who won first place in photographic technology. Jamestown won first in video game design, and there were quite a few members on that team. We had DECA, D E C A, Marketing District Competition, and so had quite a few winners from that place. Lafayette students won first and third place at that district competition. The Future Business Leaders of America Regional Competition, we had three first-place winners and a second-place winner there. There is a NASA Hunch Competition where students have made it to the finals in Houston and should actually be there going tomorrow. So that's a huge honor for those students as well. There is the Technology Student Association Leadership Academy, and students presented at that. There is one of our teachers, Joanne Talmadge, received an award from the National Society of Black Engineers, Newport News Chapter for her work with them. We have Blue Star Litters, Blue Star Schools for Financial Literacy for War Hill and Jamestown, and then Gold Star Awards for Financial Literacy. Five teachers were awarded that. So lots of wonderful things that are happening across the board for our Career Ready and Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. And I think we are wrapping up our board member reports. We'll move on to students and staff recognitions, and I'm going to ask Ms. Hundley to join me forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we are excited to express appreciation to organizations and individuals that make a tremendous impact on our learning and working environment. First, we would like to recognize representatives from three businesses. Because of their impact on our students, these organizations have been named to the 2023 Virginia School Board's Association Business Honor Roll. Our first honoree is Print Pack. Though a representative was unable to join us tonight, we would still like to honor their commitment to our students as a consistent participant in Manufacturing Day since its inception in 2014. Their involvement ensures that students are well-informed about the diverse careers in manufacturing. Print Pack has a history of hiring graduating high school seniors for part-time work while still in school and transitioning them into full-time career positions upon graduation. Last year, they actively participated in our inaugural hiring event for graduating seniors who were immediately entering the workforce, and they are eagerly anticipating future opportunities to participate. Next, from Centerra, I'd like to invite Amber Price, President, and Susan E. Bowe, Manager of Community Relations and Volunteer Services, to come forward. For over 60 years, Centerra's Junior Volunteer Program has been instrumental in giving thousands of our students an insight into the various careers available in healthcare. Our newest Centerra partnership program, Health Careers Day, allows students to tour various departments, learn in depth about career pathways in healthcare, and hear from a panel of experts representing various fields. Furthermore, Centerra is represented on the School Board's Career Advisory Committee, provides speakers for our dual enrollment healthcare classes, and participates in several WJCC events, such as our High School Career Connections Fair. Thank you to them. Thank you, Centerra. And finally, Brandy Day, Chief Talent Officer from Williamsburg Landing. Over the last three years, the Williamsburg Landing has been the clinical site provider for our nurse aide students enrolled in the dual enrollment program. This arrangement enables students to observe care providers and apply the nursing skills they have learned in the classroom in a supportive setting. The Williamsburg Landing has also actively participated in our mock interview event and Career Connections Fair. Thank you to Williamsburg Landing. Thank you all. Next, as Dr. Heron stated, it is Public School Volunteer Week. We extend our sincere appreciation to all the volunteers who support WJCC schools every day. Tonight, we celebrate 14 outstanding volunteers for their contributions. Volunteers of the Year, as your name is called, please come forward to be recognized. From Bright Beginnings, Charlie Williams. From Clara Byrd, Basset Ewing. From DJ Montague, Kelly Potachik. From James River, Patricia Murphy. From Laurel Lane, Karen King. From Matoka, Michael Gross. From Norwich, Karen Koprowski. From Stonehouse, Don Butts and Cody. From James Blair, Megan Reuter. From Tuano, Nicole Osborne. And from Jamestown, Michael Loy. We also want to recognize Kirsten Murphy from Lois S. Hornsby, Pam Suppley from Matthew Whaley, and Pam Arnold from J. Blayton, who were unable to join us this evening. These volunteers spend countless hours in our schools and contribute their time, talents, and expertise to support our students. We are grateful for their unwavering dedication to and strong sense of advocacy for our students' success. Each of these individuals has an important role on our team, and it is a privilege to take this moment to thank them for their partnership. Congratulations to our 2023 Volunteers of the Year. Mr. Chairman, this concludes recognitions for this evening.
Thank you so much to all of our volunteers, to the community that supports the effort made by the division. Really couldn't do it without you, and just want to say thank you again. Thank you so much. Move on to item 61, public comment for the evening. Ms. Ordigo?
It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked not to engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated 1 minute and 30 seconds to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo.
Tonight, we have one speaker, Mr. Marco Sardi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. My name is Marco Sardi. I'm the Vice President of WJCEA, and I am here to thank you all for your previous vote to support the 10% raise for staff for next year. And while I would like to express my disappointment in the Board of Supervisors' response in their submitted budget proposal, I am here to encourage you all to reach out to your counterparts on the Board of Supervisors as we are trying to raise that additional $2 million in the budget for a 7% raise, which would help cover the cost of living for staff for this year. I also want to thank Dr. Heron for her continued advocacy for her staff and employees. On behalf of all of us, we thank you deeply. And I would like to conclude this brief comment with an understanding of how long this process is for all of us involved, and how long it is for employees to have to wait each year to find out how this process is going to conclude, which even though it began six months ago, is not yet underway. I would like to thank each member of the Board for their time and consideration throughout this process. You're willing to listen to your employees, and to the best of your ability, make the decisions that you feel is in the best interest of us, the students, and in how we can continue to ensure WJCC is a competitive division and a symbol of excellence. I thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Sardi. Okay. Move on to our consent agenda for the evening. Bear with me. A lot of reading here, it looks like. And ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes item 71, approval of financial report and monthly bills and payroll for March 23, 2023. 72, approval of minutes from March 17, 2023's meeting. 73, approval of minutes from March 21, 2023's meeting. 74, approval of minutes from April 11, 2023's meeting. Item 75, approval of resolution R1323 National Teacher Appreciation Week. Item 76, approval of resolution R1423 School Nutrition Employee Appreciation Week. Item 77, approval of resolution R1523 National School Nurse Day. Item 78, approval of revisions to policy IJ, school counseling programs. 79, approval of revisions to policy JHH, student welfare suicide. Item 710, approval of revisions to policy GB, equal employment and non-discrimination. 711- Seven Eleven, Approval of Revisions to Policy GCBAA Professional Staff National Board Certification Recognition. Seven Twelve, Approval of Creation of Policy GCCB Employment of Family Members. Seven Thirteen, Approval of Revisions to Policy GCI Professional Staff Assignments and Transfers. Seven Fourteen, Approval of Revisions to Policy GCL Professional Staff Development. Seven Fifteen, Approval of Revisions to Policy IC School Year. Seven Sixteen. Seven Sixteen, Approval of Revisions to Policy JC School Attendance Areas. Seven Seventeen, Approval of Revisions to Policy JFG Search and Seizure. And Item Seven Eighteen, Approval of Revisions to Policy LB Relations with Other Schools and School Divisions. Is there a motion to? Well, thank you, Ms. Young.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young. Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. We'll move on to our action items for the evening. Item Eight One, if I can have a motion to approve the personnel actions presented this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. And Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. Item Eight Two, Approval of the Local Plan and Budget for Career and Technical Education. Is there a motion for this item?
Mr. Chair, I I move to approve the local plan and budget for career and technical education, Carl D. Perkins Grant first, School Year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Is there a second on this motion?
Second.
I think I heard Dr. Beers. Thank you, Dr. Beers. Just beat ya. Maybe not. All right. Any discussion on this item? Just want to thank Ms. Walters and your your crew, your team, for the presentation we received last meeting, and for all the hard work that goes into making this grant actually possible, year in and year out. So, thank you so much. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. All right. Item Eight Three, Approval of Revisions to the Advisory Committee Bylaws. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the revisions to the Advisory Committee Bylaws.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
They're not they're not moving up. The Board Docs is not. It it wasn't moving up.
I had to freeze.
It's locked. Is it locked for you?
It was. I went back and then came back in.
I'll ask Ms. Ordigo to make the. Do you see it now?
Yeah, have someone else make. Yeah, because it.
If you don't mind.
Okay. I move to approve revisions to the bylaws for the Special Education Advisory Committee, Twenty-First Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee, and Student Advisory Committee as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. And is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Donner. Thank you for reading my thought there. All right. Any discussion on this item? Again, thank you to Ms. Bourgeois and Dr. Brown for all the work that's gone into advising the Advisory Committee and getting satisfactory bylaw recommendation revisions. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. Item Eight Four, if I can have a motion to approve the purchase request for high school student laptops and yearbook media center desktop computers from Lenovo in the amount of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the purchase request for high school student laptops and yearbook media center desktop computers to Lenovo for one hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, Ms. Donner.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo, for the second. Thank you, Mr. Landers. We're just gonna go around the tables. Thank you, Mr. Landers, for all of your steadfast work as well. Any discussion on this item? Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. All right. Moving right along, Item Eight Five, if there's a motion to approve the award of contract for invitation for bid two zero two three zero nine three eight for the Clara Byrd Baker Restaurant renovation.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the award of contract for invitation for bid number two zero two three zero nine three eight, Clara Byrd Baker Restaurant Renovations, including the base bid in the amount of one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, and add alternate number one in the amount of ninety-five thousand to Vertex Co. for the total amount of two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Discussion or questions on this item? All right. Mr. Snipes, you're up. Thank you so much. You do a fantastic job for the school division. We appreciate you. Thanks for going to work on this. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel. Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. Item Eight Six, if there's a motion to approve the award of contract for carpet replacement at Matthew Whaley Elementary School under cooperative contract. Cooperative Contract Number Zero Eight Zero Eight One Nine. Ms. Donner?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the award of contract for carpet replacement at Matthew Whaley Ele- Elementary School to WC Carpenter under cooperative contract number Zero Eight Zero Eight One Nine in the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and one cent.
One penny.
One penny.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think that was Ms. Hummel. Thank you, Ms. Hummel. I don't think we want to ask about the penny. We're just gonna forgive it.
I got a penny. I could I could throw that in.
Thanks very much.
All right. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers. Mr. Dow.
Aye. And then Items Eight Seven, Approval of Award of Contract and Associated Budget Transfer for Fleet-Related Technology and Software Solutions. Is there a motion for this item?
Mr. Chair, I approve the award of contract for fleet-related technology and software solutions to Equalist Group under cooperative control, number COG dash two one two three A, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars in the associated budget transfer.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Donner. Any questions? Discussion on this item? Okay. Can I get a reminder about the associated budget transfer? Sorry to put anybody on the spot, but.
Ms. Ewing.
Yes, sir. Those funds are gonna come from instructional salaries and benefits.
Okay.
To cover the one-time cost this fiscal year.
The one-time cost, okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. All right. We'll move on to a discussion item, information item. Nine One, Strategic Plan Update from Dr. Heron and Staff, Year Five Progress for Goal Four and Goal One Point Four. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last evening, last board meeting, you got an update on Goals Three and Five, and this evening, we have updates on Goal Four and One Point Four. We're breaking up some of the different strategies to bring you different pieces of information at different times, but this evening, Mrs. Bourgeois is gonna lead off, and followed by Mr. Landers in Goal Four. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. This evening's Strategic Plan Update begins with Goal Four, Safety and Security. I'm proud to share the work of Division staff across multiple departments, all focused on creating a safe, secure, and welcoming environment for students and staff. Strategy One prioritizes the resources provided by staff, including our school counselors and school nurses, to create a safe learning environment. As part of our work in providing students with school-based resources and supports to enhance the development of their social, emotional, and mental health, school counselors track data related to time spent in direct services to students. Presented here is the three-year trend data for those direct services provided by our school counselors. As you may recall, the goal established by the state is eighty percent. So far this year, direct service delivery times have increased for elementary and high school counseling staff. The decrease in time at the middle school level is an area of focus that Ms. Walter and the middle school counselors are looking at closely in order to develop action steps for the remainder of the year, with an anticipated increase in direct service minutes by the close of school. WJCC Schools also has a very talented team of school nurses who are committed to assessing students who come to the clinic. Their first priority is always the health of the student. Our nurses are very skilled in completing a thorough clinical nursing assessment to identify a student's readiness or inability to return to class versus the need to go home. Return to class is a priority whenever possible in order to support every student's ability to access the learning environment. This year has seen an increase in the number of students who are able to safely return to class. Strategy Two of Goal Four focuses on the operational and structural elements of school safety. Work this year has focused on recommendations from the April twenty twenty-two Risk Vulnerability Threat Assessment Study completed for WJCC Schools. As you may recall, addressing the risk-threat vulnerability recommendations from last year's study is broken down into four areas: Personnel, Process Procedures and Training, and Internal Functions and External Functions. In the Personnel area, the Division was awarded a grant that provides funding for a school security officer at eight of our elementary schools, and we have currently hired four security officers for those positions. Matthew Whaley was not included in this grant application because it has a school resource officer through a separate grant the City of Williamsburg Police Department received. This grant does require an annual application. In addition, the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-four includes a position to oversee school safety and emergency management. This dedicated position will provide consistency in development and implementation of our safety procedures. And in order to implement clear processes, the School Division is currently pursuing procurement of a technology platform to manage emergency situations, visitor screening, and volunteer management. Our internal steps include upgrading the school-based radios. Ninety radios have already been replaced, and another ninety-four have been ordered with delivery anticipated before the end of the school year. This is in addition to the emergency radios upgrade that was already completed earlier in the year. Work has also been completed in all buildings on door-locking mechanisms. In addition, installation of window coverings for identified areas such as entry doors and cafeteria windows is in process. Additional internal structural components include installation of enhanced window coverings for the interior door and office windows. And to address our external areas, the Division is currently assessing signage, fencing, and bollard needs by each campus. We have also received a DCJS grant that will create digital maps of our facilities. Moving to Strategy Four, the ongoing work to keep our technological systems safe will be shared by Mr. Landers.
Good evening. Part of Strategy Four focuses on maintaining the availability of our network. We completed a project in upgrading our wireless access points in each of the elementary schools, and are pleased that our overall network availability continues to be reliable at over ninety-nine point eight percent, which we have maintained going back to past five years. We monitor our bandwidth utilization, with the goal of average consumption should not exceed eighty-five percent in order to allow some room for peak periods. This year, we have averaged seventy-six percent, which is in line with previous years, in which we have averaged between seventy-six and seventy-nine percent over the past three years. We also monitor the available kilobytes per second per student, which federal guidelines have set a goal of at least one hundred kilobytes per second per student, which we exceed. We continue our partnerships with VITA and with the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center. According to the two thousand twenty-two End-of-Year Analysis Report, the K-12 Cybersecurity Resource Center has indicated that data breaches, usually as the result of either phishing attacks or ransomware, remain the highest levels of threat for K-12 school divisions, as represented in the graph on the lower left of the screen, which shows a five-year period from two thousand sixteen through two thousand twenty-one, and the steadily increasing attacks, with one thousand three hundred and thirty-one incidents reported. This year, we have implemented the GoGuardian Parent App to allow parents to see what their students are doing on the web and when. We announced this app in our family newsletters, as well as on the Division website, prior to the start of the school year, and made it available starting in August of two thousand twenty-two. We have attempted to obtain use data from GoGuardian, however, in the interest of safety, they do not share parent data. We have also implemented an artificial intelligence-based email security product to enhance our protection against phishing and spoofing attacks, to better protect not only our network, but also our staff. During the ninety-day period this year, this tool captured over three hundred instances of spoofing and phishing emails that would have otherwise made their way to staff member mailboxes. We must ensure that our firewall has all applicable updates and patches on an ongoing basis. This measure must always be one hundred percent current, which we have met. We also must be sure that our staff have the resources to keep on top of trends and technological advantage advances by taking advantage of professional development. Our goal is that our network staff attend at least two industry PD sessions per year each, and we have met that target. We also ask all new hires to complete a Safe Schools Module on Email Security. Lastly, we continue to work with all vendors that require access in any form to our student data to enforce the Student Data Privacy Agreement that is supported by the Virginia Department of Education. Each contract requires that the vendor meet certain protection criteria, either at contract signing, or in the case of existing contracts, contract renewal. Currently, seventeen of our vendors have signed the agreement. Thank you. I'll turn it back over to Ms. Bourgeois.
In Strategy Six for Goal Four, WJCC has continued our commitment to health and wellness of students, staff, and families through the School Health Initiative Program, which is funded by the Williamsburg Health Foundation. An area of re-energized focus this year has been on family engagement. Activities so far this year include challenge clubs, which this spring served one thousand one hundred and ninety-five students participating in fifty-five clubs. Families have also had the opportunity to see many sides of the SHIP program at their school's family nights, from food tastings to nutrition and physical activity games and lessons. And SHIP has continued to provide the home gardening kits and cooking challenge kits that were developed during the pandemic. Looking at the SHIP data for the past three years shows a consistent and significant impact on students and families. Challenge clubs continued virtually on a reduced scale during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, but rebounded last year and are bursting this year. Parent engagement with clubs has returned during the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year, with over three hundred parents participating in the end of club activities this spring, including a certain board member who enjoyed playing quidditch last week. The garden kits and school family nights have provided additional opportunities for family engagement with SHIP activities. So far this year, families have participated in three opportunities with our kits that included growing potatoes, beans, kale, and microgreens, as well as our pumpkin cook-off challenge. The spring cooking challenge kits will be offered in May to two hundred families. Oh, sorry. As we continue Goal Four work for the remainder of this year and into next year, there are priority areas for our work. Division staff are working with local agencies to identify resources that will allow easier access to direct mental health services for our students. Work will also continue on implementation of recommendations from the Risk Vulnerability Assessment, and protecting our technology systems while providing quality access for students and staff will continue. In a future meeting, the work. In a future meeting, the work on strategy four-point-five, building a positive and inclusive school culture that inspires all students to participate fully in their school experience, will be presented with a focus on improving attendance and our response to student behaviors. This concludes our presentation for this evening. We're happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Bourgeois and Mr. Landers, any questions for the two? Yes, Ms. Ortega.
You s- I think, Ms. Bourgeois, you said we have four SSOs hired out of a grant for eight.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a reason we only have four?
That all the positions are posted, so as they're finding qualified applicants, they're bringing them on board as quickly as they're identified.
Okay, so it's just an availability of people applying?
But also, I think because it's a grant-funded position that was authorized in the middle of the year, that would deter some applicants from applying because they don't know if it's going to exist next year again.
That was gonna be my next question, if there's an expiration date or if it's in perpetuity.
Yep, it was provided in in full with a grant from the state for this year. There is a grant for next year that we've applied for. Um, but in the next one, there actually is a match that relates to RLCI. And and so there would be some funding we would have to find as a division to take the grant money should be we be awarded the money again for these positions. And we'll have to talk about how to manage that when when we know we have the grant.
So just to clarify, next year, we we will have to match for all eight if we take any grant money?
Yes, basically, we get a lesser amount of money based on our local composite index.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega.
Ms. Bourgeois, you said the next meeting we would be talking about, you said four-point-five, which is
creating a positive culture. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because, um, first of all, thanks so much for this presentation. It's amazing, all of the different components that go into goal number four. Because it covers the whole gamut, right? The external, internal, ev- everything.
Every department.
Department touches everything. I think as a school board member, for me, going to some of, um, some of the school visits, the focus for me right now is four-point-one. And so I'd be the the providing students with school-based resources and supports to enhance the development of their social, emotional, and mental health, and how that fits in with four-point-five that you're gonna be talking about at the next meeting, and what kind of support we can give our administrators. Because I think I'm not alone in hearing that, uh, we've got we've got some issues, especially in the lower levels, with some of our our babies that are coming through, whether they're coming from preschool, coming into kindergarten, where, uh, we really have some behavioral problems that we need to get to the bottom of. And, um, we've also heard about this at the middle school and the high school, where it tends to be at every school, a handful of students that are making life miserable for the other students in their classroom. And I'm sure those students have miserable situations. So those students, I'm sure, need a lot of support, but so do the other students in the class that are dealing with it, and the faculty, the teachers, and the administrators. So for me, this four-point-one and four-point-five are are, they're all important, but for me right now, that it's something that, as a school board, I would like us to really look into.
Mrs. Hummel, at the next meeting, we actually took four-point-five out of this presentation because of the length of the information going to be presented. And that's why we set it apart as a separate strategy under this goal. So it's gonna come with Goal Two, which it relates to in some ways, uh, because MTSS is in Goal Two. And so that will be leadoff next on May second with our next goal presentations and updates. We'll also be providing some information to the board this week in their two-by-one meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel, and I concur. Thank you for your words. Ms. Donner, then we'll circle back to Ms. Ortega.
Thank you. I have, I had a great time at Quidditch. I was the goalie. Luckily, no one tried to score on me. I'm curious about the direct counseling services, and you mentioned a little bit about the drop-off in middle school. And I was just curious as to, um, the number of coun- of counselors that we have in the middle school. Do we, are those positions off all filled and kind of what some of the other root causes might be?
We do have our expert in counseling and career readiness who's going to be speaking next. So Ms. Walter, if you would join us at the front of the room. I believe we are fully staffed in the counseling staff. Right now, our ratio is one to two-fifty students.
That was just a setup to bring her up to the table.
Thank you very much.
We currently have, uh, ten middle school counselors across all four middle schools, and we are fully staffed, K- Twelve, and in our non-traditional program with our school counselors this year.
Ms. Yon?
Yes, uh, the question's for Mr. Landers, I think. Mr. Landers, you you said that you had, the division had, um, provided the Guardian Parent App that parents could access. What what exactly is that? I mean, what kind of protections does it provide for parents if they wanted to use it?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Actually, it provides information to the parents. It's an app that is provided by the company GoGuardian that parents are able to download. They're then provided with a key that connects their account directly to their students in our schools. So they're able to see what websites their, uh, children have been visiting. They're able to set time limits to shut off their access at home. Um, and they're able to specify websites that their children are not able to access, uh, while they're at home.
Does that include things like TikTok and Instagram?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, because I I mean, one of the things we're hearing is the influence that TikTok has. What what is the age limit for, uh, for students or young people to be able to be on TikTok? Do you, do you know?
I'm not sure off the top of my head. I would have to research that.
I I my son told me it was thirteen and, uh-
Generally, the the industry average is thirteen with parental consent.
Right.
And then eighteen, they're able to access it as as an adult.
But if, but as a parent, if I wanted to go on and my student had a phone, I could block access to those those apps if I if I wanted my student not to have access to them, right?
With the GoGuardian app?
Right.
Uh, they're able to block it with the division-issued device. Now, if you buy your, excuse me, if a parent buys a child a phone that is not associated to our network, then the GoGuardian app has no control over that.
But they can-
It's only division-issued devices.
Okay, but can they purchase it themselves if they were interested?
Uh, yes, ma'am. There are a number of apps that are available on the market, um, NetNanny. There there are several good ones out there that, uh, parents are able to purchase on their own.
Okay, because I think some of our students are getting in things far above them. But thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll add to the PSA that most, uh, service providers, cellphone service providers also allow you to block your anyone in your, um, account, um, apps, texts, photos, that sort of thing. So, um, I think service providers are getting on board too. Ms. Ortega.
So along the same lines, how many parent, how many WJCC parents have availed themselves of the GoGuardian app?
That was part of the data we tried to get from GoGuardian, but they just refused to share anything in the umbrella of, uh, security. They don't want to share specific information with us.
So we don't know if anyone is using it?
Um, we know some of them are because they've called in for help. Uh, but unfortunately, I was not able to get a specific number.
Is there an expense to the division related to that app?
Uh, it comes as part of our sus- uh, overall subscription to GoGuardian itself, uh, which we use as part of our filtering technology. So there's not a specific cost for the app, whether one parent downloads it or a thousand download it. It doesn't matter. It's part of the overall subscription.
Okay.
I I was gonna ask, do we have any feedback on GoGuardian, uh, the app? Maybe it's too early for that. I think that maybe I'm hearing it's too early for feedback.
Uh, could be just in general, the few parents that I've spoken with when they've called in for help, the overall feedback is that they're pleased we're providing this capability to them. Uh, we've had a number of requests in prior years, uh, before we rolled this out. Uh, but for any detailed satisfaction survey, it is a bit too early.
One other question from me, uh, back to the SSO conversation for SSOs. I'm just curious how quickly we're able to, I don't wanna suggest that we wanna be quick about it, but how quickly we're able to stand up a new SSO.
Mr. Keever may be able to respond to that one.
It's, it's a difficult process. We, as soon as we had the grant fund available to us in December, we posted, got applicants in, and have consistently tried to interview folks who were interested in in the position. So if there's a position available tomorrow, we'll get it posted and get it out there. I think we have really been hamstrung, as Dr. Heron mentioned, about the 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 inability to know that there's necessarily a position available in the upcoming year, especially at the elementary level. So that that has been a deterrent, I think, for some folks to apply.
Apart from the hiring process, the training?
The training for the SSOs is really driven by DCJS. So we we get our folks affiliated with school division policies and procedures, but the DCS training, DCJS training, um, doesn't happen on necessarily a weekly basis. It does take a little bit of black time.
Right, okay, that's what I thought. Thank you, and welcome back.
Thank you.
I just have one question for Mr. Landers. I know we are monitoring our students on the laptops and things, and sometimes I've, um, been reading about other divisions that have students that are getting into things that they're not supposed to. How busy are you all keeping, keeping the kids off of things, or they're very creative to unblock? And so how, are we doing pretty good with that?
We're, we're doing pretty good with it. Uh, we've, we've had some challenges in previous years. And knock on wood, cross my fingers, this year has been fairly calm to some of the previous years. Um, so I can't say that it's an ongoing battle, um, but, uh, they do get rather inventive, and periodically, we will have one that percolates its way to our engineer staff that may have to do a little bit of research. But overall, um, I think we have a a good group of students.
Okay, thank you.
I I had another question that popped in my head too. Ms. Ortega?
So I have two other questions. I'll try to be quick. Relating to what, um, Ms. Hummel just said, just anecdotally, I know of a parent who, um, had an elementary school student who, not not trying to do anything bad, had had Word document that was saved in a shared drive that she could, by just typing messages on a Word document and then uploading it to a shared drive, was communicating with another student who was also just an another little girl, um, in another school or somewhere else. Um, this wasn't trying, this wasn't circumventing any websites or chat rooms or anything that we think of as normal communication. It was literally a a Word document on a shared drive. So I just wanted to bring that up to say, and these are, these were little girls that weren't even trying to circumvent. They just figured out a way to talk. And so if that wasn't two six-year-old girls, though, what if that was someone else who was nefarious on the other side of the Word document? So I just wanted to bring that up as just anecdotally that I've heard about and maybe not something we even think about as cybersecurity. Um, but then on a completely different topic, um, about the lunches and the ship or the ship, the Goal Four Focus four-point-six, I'm just curious, how does our, does our school, do our school lunches and our, the food that we're offered, does that relate at all to any of this goal and focus?
Yes, in previous year, SHIP has worked very closely with our Child Nutrition Services Department and Ms. Haley and her team. Um, and they would provide, like, tastings. We would do farm-to-school tastings and that sort of thing. Um, they have not yet returned to those, but it is intended to to do so.
So that the food that we actually provide as lunches will will fall under this goal?
No, if it, they work in partnership. It doesn't necessarily fall under this specific goal, but it, they work in partnership. They, um, we had a a nutrition position that has been open for a while, so we've restructured that, and they have a dietitian doing some contract work. But, um, they would, the the dietitian that through SHIP would look at the menus and work with Ms. Haley and her team in development of the menus. So so they have those historical, that historical information that continues to be used.
I'm gonna reserve mine as an SBQ, but, um, mine is around AI. I'm just curious if and how we're leaning into AI as a tool for plagiarism. Don't need an answer today, but just curious about it.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, we're we're pleased to bring up our one-point-four this evening. Um, again, this is a fairly extensive strategy under Goal One, and therefore, we've taken it, uh, apart from the rest and asking Ms. Walter and her team to present this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the board. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to share updates related to Goal One, Strategy Four, and college and career readiness work across the division. Joining me tonight is Ms. Melissa Che, our CTE Coordinator, uh, who has been instrumental in supporting this work throughout the division. I'd also like to recognize a member of the team who was unable to be here tonight due to a death in her family, but Ms. Sherry Thrift is our division career coach, and she has been essential to the development of these opportunities for students, and her support of students throughout the division is appreciated. Goal One of our strategic plan, Elevate Beyond Excellence, focuses on academic achievement and college and career readiness through transforming teaching and learning to prepare students for success in post-secondary education and careers. In strategy four, our focus is to expand opportunities for students to participate in authentic workplace experiences. Through this work, it is important to understand what is defined as a workplace experience. In Virginia, the Department of Education identifies twelve different high-quality work-based learning experiences, which are listed on the screen and outlined in the video we handout provided to you tonight. These experiences are built and based on instructional preparation from courses students have taken, students' career, and future interests, and they take place in partnership with local businesses and organizations. These experiences enable students to apply that classroom instruction in a real-world work environment and promote career awareness, exploration, and preparation. The experiences listed in green on the slide above are work-based learning experiences that students are currently participating in this school year in WJCC. When looking at these experiences for students in WJCC currently, it can be helpful to look at both the variation in type of experience available and the number of students participating in these experiences. For comparison, you are able to see here what these different data points looked like in two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year, or the year prior to COVID, and then over the past two years. The COVID years did pose a challenge for work-based learning as many employers in the community and across the nation changed their own structure of work and work environment. This allows us to look at where we are now compared to where we were five years ago. Here, you are able to see that when looking at categories of high-quality work-based learning experiences for students, in the eighteen, nineteen school year, WJCC students were participating in one type of experience, cooperative education. This year, we have students participating in seven out of twelve experiences through cooperative education, clinical experiences, mentorships, externships, internships, school-based enterprises, and service learning. This is a six-hundred percent growth over five years' time. From the student's side, in eighteen, nineteen, there were twenty WJCC students participating in a high-quality work-based learning experience. This school year, we have noted one hundred and twenty-three students participating in a high-quality work-based learning experience, and know that number will grow prior to the end of the school year, as some have just begun working in their experiences this spring. That is a growth of five hundred and sixty-five percent over the past five years. As noted, these are current numbers, and we believe they may increase again potentially in both areas by the end of the school year. I'd like to take the next few moments to share more details about what these experiences look like for students. Clinical experiences are specifically for students enrolled in identified health and medical science courses. These students are placed in a healthcare role within a local community organization or healthcare office and observe healthcare staff in their work and patients in different levels of need. We currently have twenty-eight students participating in a clinical experience this year, and those students are enrolled in our dual enrollment health science classes at Virginia Peninsula Community College, and may be working in a local nursing home or completing a ride-along with EMTs or spending time in an emergency department. Cooperative education is when a student is enrolled in a CTE course and then earns a credit for working in an environment- and then earns a credit for working in an environment that aligns with that course. This work experience is a paid workplace experience and requires a minimum of 280 hours. An example here would be a student enrolled in fashion marketing and working in a retail role at a clothing store. This year, we have 20 students participating in cooperative education experience. In a mentorship experience, students are paired with a professional in the identified field of interest and are provided with hands-on experience, work and a broad view of the industry through this experience. This experience aligns with the coursework the student is learning and is eligible for a partial credit if the student participates in a minimum of 140 hours. An example here would be a vet science student working in, at the Humane Society. An externship experience is a more intensive job shadowing experience. Here, students are paired with a professional in an identified career field and will observe the professional and the work requirements and tasks within the industry for a minimum of 40 hours. Work is not delegated to students within this experience. An example here would be a vet science student working at a veterinarian's office. In an internship experience, a student works in a field of interest to develop specific career-related knowledge and skills. Students who complete a minimum of 280 hours in an internship are eligible to earn credit towards graduation. An example of this type of experience would be a student working at Colonial Williamsburg, which I'm excited to share more, in more detail with you coming up. A school-based enterprise is a student-managed operation and experience within the school setting. These enterprises replicate the workplace experience and provide career insights for students. Our two most common school-based enterprises are the Bayport Credit Union branches within our high schools and our school stores that are managed and run by marketing students. Service learning is more than just community service. Within this experience, students are researching a community need, develop a plan to address that need and then implement the plan developed. Skills learned throughout this experience address academic, social and personal skills that will support students in whatever field of work they choose to pursue. We have many examples of this happening throughout WJCC this school year and I'll be sharing one in more detail with you in a few moments. As just described, students' knowledge, skills and attitudes are enhanced by participating in the variety of high-quality work-based learning experiences available. But who better to hear from about these opportunities though than a student? I'd like to introduce you to True Gallion, a Vet Science II student at War Hill High School who worked with our Division Career Coach, Sherry Thrift, to identify an internship experience meaningful to her and has been completing her internship this year at Colonial Williamsburg. True was kind enough to share her thoughts on her experience in work-based learning this year and I welcome you to follow along with her in this next clip.
So the best part about this, working here at Colonial Williamsburg has been being able to interact with the animals and being hands-on with them and just learning something new every single time I come. I wanted to come here to get more experience working with livestock and large animals because I discovered I have a passion for working with them. After I graduate from high school, I am planning on going to Virginia Tech, Go Hokies, and majoring in Animal and Poultry Sciences on a pre-vet track. I know there's a lot of labs freshman year, you get to go out in the field and do things, so I feel like I'll have more of a grasp on what to do when I go there. I think the people here are amazing. They're very, very kind, very open for you to ask things and it's brought me out of my comfort zone to ask more questions about things I don't know and it's really interesting to see what they know and what they've taught me and their willingness to teach me.
Since True been here, I have seen her grow. So as far as working with the animals, getting comfortable, used to the animals, not afraid to get her hands dirty and then this has set her up for the future. So if she want to do anything like veterinarian care, vet tech or go to veterinarian school or some type of animal program, then she can go right into that with the confidence that she came here and got hands-on experience before she went out there in the real world.
As seen in the previous clip, these experiences aren't solely beneficial to our students. There, there are community benefits as well. As an additional example, I'd like to share with you more about a service learning experience happening at Lafayette High School this year. Earlier in the fall, Ms. Lanham, a CTE teacher at Lafayette, implemented the Lead for Change program in her independent living classes to provide students with an opportunity to gain leadership skills and to facilitate work-based learning experiences for her students. Under her leadership, Ms. Lanham's students researched community needs and discovered that nursing home patients are often lonely because they get very few visitors. As a result, the students designed their service learning experience around bringing joy to patients at the Dominion Village Nursing Home once a month to help combat the feeling of loneliness. Ms. Lanham wrote and received a PTA grant for her students to purchase crafts and activities like checkers, cards and charades to take with them so they could spend quality time with the residents. This mutually beneficial experience has brought joy to all involved, but I would like you to learn more about this experience directly from Ms. Lanham.
We're at Dominion Village of Williamsburg and they're just doing a craft with the residents. And so it's a community service project and so we're helping to deter just the, the feeling of loneliness. The best part is that they actually realize that getting out there and doing things in the community, even though you don't get monetary value, you get a lot of rewards from it. They've grown and have some close friendships. They've got some great leadership skills. Think that they gained a lot of knowledge, the teamwork skills, problem-solving skills. They get the skills just to be able to get out there and talk and interact, not only with each other, but the residents. And I think some of them are really come out of their show since we've been doing this. And I'm just really glad that, you know, they allowed us to come and we're glad that we can come. We hope this is something we can continue every year.
In addition to creating opportunities for work-based learnings for students, the College and Career Readiness Team has been creating opportunities across the division to help students learn more about various careers and start to build skills for the future. This year, WJCC expanded our annual Manufacturing Day to a Manufacturing and Trades Day, highlighting career opportunities in both manufacturing and the trades. Additionally, this year, we created three separate days, one for each high school, allowing a larger number of students to participate than in prior years. As you can see on the slide above, in the 1920 school year, we were able to provide this experience to 82 students. But through expanding to three separate days, we were able to grow to 115 students across the three high schools. This year, we were excited to introduce our first annual Career Connections Fair. In February, WJCC hosted this event at War Hill for 10th through 12th grade students and families. With the slogan of Get Connected, Get Experience, Get Employed, we were able to partner with 45 different businesses and organizations who were offering either a work-based learning experience, full-time career opportunities or a combination of these for students. Each student was welcomed with a flyer that detailed the community partner present and offerings available through each organization. It is estimated that approximately 150 WJCC students and community members attended to learn more at this event. We look forward to continuing with this opportunity in the future. Last school year, WJCC offered its first-ever mock interview event for students enrolled in Economics and Personal Finance classes at all three high schools. And as you heard a few times this evening, we were excited to offer this experience again this year, just last week. And while we are still finalizing numbers to account for any absent students, we have estimated that 116 community partners were able to provide a mock interview experience to 715 high school students in WJCC. This experience has shown to be very beneficial for students and the community overall and we look forward to offering this annually for our students. We are excited about the growth we have experienced in this area and in future, in recent years, and are working through plans to continue to foster that growth for the future. That includes current work being done, looking beyond CTE and identifying experiences our students are participating in through other content areas. Additionally, we are working with all CTE teachers and programs to align these opportunities within each CTE course offered in WJCC. With this growth comes new knowledge and we have learned things along the way that have helped support our development of new processes to ease the maintenance of this information for all school and division staff. As part of this work, we have also been building a Career Connections database of community partners who are willing to collaborate with the school division and open their doors to students. In partnership with our Career Ready Advisory Committee, we strive to grow these partnerships annually and have also created pathways on our website for volunteers to identify this interest. Over the past three years, we have been fortunate to have over 100 community businesses and organizations partner with WJCC through a variety of experiences and opportunities available. We welcome any interested community partner to visit the WJCC website and follow the steps to become a community partner. In closing, I would like to take a moment and share a sincere thank you to our community partners who have shared their knowledge, experience and time with our students and staff to provide these opportunities. Community involvement is essential to the success of these programs and we are grateful for our partners in this work. Thank you for your time this evening. I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Any questions for Ms. Walters while we have her?
I, I have one question. So how, how is the high-quality work-based learning opportunities presented to the students? Is it just through guidance or, because this is fabulous. I'm, I'm looking at it and I didn't know a lot of this and I, and I had a child to go through the nurse, wanting to be a nurse since age four and not having some of these shadowing and internship opportunities. And so I was just trying to figure out how are they presented to the students? Do they see like that video or, you know, because that's just fabulous. And also for me, it would be helpful, like I'd like to know how many students were, what grade levels and tease out kind of which things they were in, just to see.
By grade level or by experience?
Well, for example, we, so it says sixth through 12th. So what I'm envisioning, so if I started in sixth grade, like is that automatic? I continue seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, like once you're in, like you're, maybe nobody else can come in because you've already got the lockdown on the people that started in sixth grade.
We welcome everyone. So our middle school programming, as far as work-based learning goes, is, is, I would say, under construction. There are some school-based opportunities that Ms. Che has been working with our CTE team to identify and create. You may notice on that handout and if, and as I haven't memorized it, I apologize. Some are specific, yes, grade levels on there. Some are not available for anyone outside of 11th and 12th grade. So it does depend on the experience as far as what grade level students can participate in. The majority of our students and the students where we have identified the data here are high school-level students. We could break down the grade level for you at a later time. I don't have that data with me tonight.
So students don't get something like this? So a student would get something saying, oh, if you'd like this, then you can enter in 10th grade or you can, how, it just seems so overwhelming.
We work with multiple pathways. So Ms. Thrift shares out information. Our school counselor shared information during the course registration process and during course planning and future planning. And then our CTE teachers also work with students and in their classrooms to identify ways that what they are learning can then connect to a work-based learning experience. And so it's often that Ms. Che and Ms. Thrift and myself are helping to build that bridge between our community partners and our school staff to place students.
So as a parent, the only way I would have found out about that is if my child had have said, when I met with my counselor, I decided to do some of these things.
Or if they shared what they've learned from their teacher. We do have information available on our website, I believe, through our College and Career Readiness website. These videos are hot off the press for you this evening, so no students have seen them just yet, but they would be something that we will make available through some platform on our website.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Any questions? Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I, I really commend you.
We can't hear you, sir.
I'm sorry. For so many of those areas, one in particular that I think is really important and I, and I was really glad to hear about that is young, young people, students going into assisted living places. One of the largest growing areas in the health industry has to do with the geriatrics. And so if they, if they find themselves, you know, really liking to work with older folks like that, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother area to direct them. And the other part of that though is, I know from, not my own personal experience, but from friends who have wives or husbands or brothers and sisters in some of those facilities, is, is having young people come around on a fairly regular basis is so important for older people. We have, we, we tend to, when they get to a certain, you know, ability or age, they, they get, they, they, they end up somewhere else and they're, they're drawn away from that. And I, I just think that's a wonderful opportunity for everybody doing that.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Ortega?
Yeah, I just wanted to commend you. I think everything that you presented tonight was, is really amazing. And I think there's obviously a lot of, for, for growth and expansion and, and more innovative ideas, but I think what we have here is really special and, and I think it's really, our students are lucky. I just had a very quick question. Do we know from, from, I know it's brand, kind of brand new, the Career Connections Fair that was last year, it was 45 partners, approximately 150 students. Do we know if any employment came out of that particular fair? So the Career Connections Fair was just this year for the first time. It was just in February. So we have had some feedback, but some isn't final yet. So some employers have talked to, to students about potential interest in employment after they graduate in June. I was thinking of it as seniors that had already graduated, so that's not really a relevant question, sorry.
I misunderstood in the same way, but yeah, so thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Ortega?
I is, I, I'm very interested about the vet program. About with the, that, that was adorable. Makes you want to become a vet, even though that's not going to happen. But how old was the young girl that, is she, is she graduating this year?
Yeah, I believe so, but I didn't write that down.
True Gallion?
I can tell you at the end. I believe that she is a senior, yes.
I mean, because it sounds like she's, what a, what a wonderful opportunity. Are they going to continue this partnership with WJCC if another student is interested in that?
Yes, we are hoping so. We actually have an upcoming meeting with Colonial Williamsburg to talk about how we can expand this opportunity.
Oh, okay, that's wonderful. And thank you for everything you do for our kids. That's, you have a big job.
We have a really great team and awesome teachers in the building that it really does take a group effort to make all this come to life and so we're, we're fortunate.
Yes, thank you so much.
This was a wonderful presentation, very uplifting. There's a lot of wonderful things going on in this division. It's great to see them highlighted in this way. So thank you, Ms. Che, Ms. Che, is it? Yeah, and Ms. Walters, thank you so much for your report and for your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our board member comments as we round out the evening. If I can start with Ms. Donner on the end?
Thank you. This week I had the privilege of visiting DJ Monty U and just seeing the wonderful things that are happening in the building. We had, as we were talking about parent and just different volunteers within the schools. When we were there, the fourth grade parents were decorating their fourth grade hallway with balloons and I think Mrs. Hundley took a picture of us there and it's just wonderful to see just that parent involvement and them talking about the joy that the kids have and seeing their hallway decorated and, and the parents just getting to be creative and doing something in the school. I am, also would love to give a shout out to our bus drivers and our substitute bus drivers. As a personal experience, my daughter had a substitute bus driver this past week or last week and just, that is a tough ride, literally, to have 40, 50-plus children bouncing around in the back of your bus and you are trying to do a new route that you're not used to and have children that see a substitute and try to test you. And so I'm just so thankful for all of our substitute bus drivers who step up to that challenge for us. And then also to the regular bus drivers, it gave my daughter an appreciation for her bus driver. So shout out to bus number 35, Ms. Nikki, and all the other bus drivers who show up day in and day out and take our children safely to and from our schools. And so just really appreciate all the hard work there. And lastly, I'm looking forward to the Matthew Wily Upcoming Strawberry Festival, which is coming up at the, I think it's May 5th. So lots of time, get your strawberry shortcake and come on out. And that is my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Ms. Hundley?
Also, I was at DJ as well and one thing that comes commonly when we ask, Also, I was at DJ as well, and one thing that comes commonly when we ask principals, what is it that we can do for you as school board, or what would you need our help with? And they're all just very kind. They always say, just treat our teachers well, just take care of our teachers, because when teachers are happy, children happy, parents are happy, I'm happy. So, I mean, every principal basically says that. They go first to their teachers over themselves. Second, Ms. Ordigo and I got to go to Jamestown, and I never thought that I would say I'd like to be at high school again, but we were in one oceanography class where the students had gotten little papers with different characteristics of fish, and they had to design their own fish, draw it, and it had to be able to interact with the other fish that were already in the ocean, and some were going to be prey and predators. And of course, I wanted to see the final. It's going to take weeks to get these fish to design, but that was, that was just very engaging to me. So I was thinking, you know, definitely wanting, why I'd want to come back the next day to class, you know, to continue to work on that. And the same thing happened when we were in AP Human Geography. The students were looking at lyrics to songs. One of them was in a song from nineteen sixty-three, because I was remembering, I would have been one years old, but they were studying how the, how America was affected. The lyrics were explaining what was going on in the agricultural industry and things like that. So they were looking at different, I guess, say, artists singing these songs, and they had to break down what was going on. And so I was curious to see if they were going to get to rap or hip-hop, you know, to figure out how that influenced America as well. So again, I wanted to stay and find out where they were going to go with that. We also got to sit in with an MTSS, that stands for Multi-Tier Student Support, discussion with teachers for about thirty minutes, and they were looking at ways to keep children engaged so that they would not, they would come to school and not miss school. And we were made honorary bird members. She's a blue jay and I was a seahawk. And just to have that thirty minutes, and I mean, they, they worked, there was like no time for dilly-daddling. They were getting to it, you know, what are we going to do about this, and what are we going to do about that? So that was very encouraging to see. And then last, I was at Stonehouse for their ship culmination project, and all the students, I saw seven different clubs that were going on, and I would say, for the amount of children, there were probably half the amount of parents there to support their children. And I did get to eat some pasta with spinach that they got out of the garden. They cut it up, they fried it up with garlic and onions that they got out of the garden, and then they added beans and pasta, and it was right tasty. And a lot of lemon, they were squeezing so much lemon, and I was thinking, they're going to kill the, the taste with that, but actually, it was good. So they knew what they were doing. And so I love, you know, y'all know I love getting in schools because it's what, it's what we do, and it's good to see that what we are doing is benefiting our students.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, just a couple of things I.
Your mic, Dr. Beers.
Want to praise and thank all our volunteers and volunteer organizations that work with us. They really help in so many ways and, and really help not just the students, but the teachers as well in the classroom. Glad to hear the strategic plan update. I'm especially interested in the social, emotional, and mental health aspects of that. They're very important, especially today. And again, happy to see a lot more world-based experiences in our schools, and I can't say enough for our staff that puts all of these opportunities together for our students. Truly, it's really amazing.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Young?
Right. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yesterday, we had the opportunity, Ms. Humble and I had the opportunity of going to CBB. I want to give a shout out to, to Mr. Hurley and, and his staff for the welcome we received. We met before, we met with him, we met with Ms. Gulick from Bright Beginnings, and were able to visit the classrooms and able to see what was going on there. I know that they're looking forward to our new extensions, which are a way out. And, and we, we did ask how that was going to change things, and it sounds like it's going to be a, a great addition to the school division. The, the thing that I thought was very interesting as we went around is how engaged students are and the teachers are, are there for the kids. I, I think the one thing that, I came away, because as I go to schools, we always ask about cellphone use and vaping, and I'm continually surprised at fourth and fifth graders using telephones during the school day, somehow smuggling them in and then sending things out on TikTok. I, I don't know if our parents are aware, but students aren't supposed to be on there until after age thirteen, and a fourth grader is, does not reach that by quite a long shot, because everything that's on TikTok is not positive. And I would encourage parents to take a look at what their kids are doing and see how it's impacting their learning at school. One of the things that I heard recently, which was kind of shocking, is we know, we know young women are especially susceptible to things that happen on social media and depression under, with our young women. And so we've got thirty percent of our young women who are suffering from depression, and a lot of it is largely due to what they see on TikTok and other social media. And one of the things that we did meet, I will not remember that, the teacher's name, it was, I asked, but I don't remember it. But she did say that, that even when approaching parents, sometimes that they're very blasé or even, or even defensive. And parents, you've got to be parents, that's your job. And, and I can say that because I survived, and you will too, I promise, but please be a parent to our kids. They, they need guidelines, they need boundaries, they need to know you're interested in them enough to say no, and no is a word that is very good to learn. I used to have a T-shirt that said, like, on days when my kids were, I had seven kids, you can see why I have the T-shirt, that when days when they were rattling me, I'd go put it on my T-shirt and said, what part of no don't you understand? And when my kids saw that, they'd go like that to me, like, okay, you're not going to listen. And, and sometimes no is a good answer, and, but please be parents. And I want you to know that the school division is here, school board supports you and your efforts, and we just want what's best for kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young and Ms. Humble.
Thank you. I wanted to thank all of the people who presented tonight. It was great hearing the update on goal number four, especially just Mr. Landers, all the things that you're doing on the tech side is, that is so behind the scenes, but so incredibly important, so I really wanted to thank you for that. And then, gosh, a huge shout out thanks to our counselors who, and our administrators who are on the front lines every single day, dealing with a lot of the social situations that are happening that affect our, our kids once they're in our school. So I, as a school board member, I just really support all of the counselors and any kind of funds that can go to increasing that area of our school budget. And then I also participated in the mock interviews, which was very, very well organized at all three high schools. I was only able to go to one, but very impressed with the high school students who, who showed up with their resumes and answered all of my questions with great honesty, and it was just a delight to be with them. Also, as Ms. Young mentioned, we went to Clearbird Baker and toured Bright Beginnings, which is our preschool, along with, in particular, the centers at Clearbird Baker, which was so fun to see, the art class, the library, the music class, and I did not know that they now give, that our funds now provide recorders for all the students. So that lovely sound.
Got three of them.
You've got three of them, the different strings based on their proficiency. Yes, so we heard a little impromptu concert.
We did.
And it was very nice. They were teaching how to keep time and the different notes, all with the recording, the recorder music, so very nice. Anyway, so I just wanted to say it was delightful to see what they're doing. And then the Bright Beginnings, as all of us know, there's a lot of special needs kids that are participating in Bright Beginnings. A lot. So you, we were in classes that had, what, three adults to ten children? And once again, the, the amazing contributions that those teachers are, are doing every single day for those students, I just, they're very special angels. And then, just a shout out, I have to say to Strawberry Festival, because when I moved here in two thousand and three, I took on the job as Strawberry Festival Chair, not knowing a soul, at Matthew Whaley, and I learned and met a whole ton of people through that experience. And Strawberry Festival is one of those just iconic Matthew Whaley events that bring students and community members and parents all together in one location eating strawberry sundaes. So it's all happiness. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Humble. Ms. Ordigo?
Thank you. Mrs. Hunley already mentioned our visit to Jamestown, but I just wanted to also thank Mr. Townsend and his assistant principals, who spent a good bit of time with us, walking us around. We talked about a number of really substantive and important topics, such as security and different issues that they're dealing with in the high school level. We also got to see the mock interview process underway, and it was just a, it was a wonderful dynamic in the room. It was, it was a lot of people participating and a lot of buzz, because everyone was talking, but it was controlled and very positive, and so that was really exciting to see. And as she mentioned, the MTSS meeting, that one was focused on attendance. I do know that we are working hard to get, you know, chronic absenteeism down, and so just want to commend every, all the teachers who are putting a lot of time and effort in recognizing that they need to connect with individual kids, and, and I know they're really pouring their hearts and souls into that. And I look forward to visiting Norwich with you tomorrow, right? Is it Norwich?
Not me.
Oh, not you? Oh, is it?
Not me. I was like, uh-oh, I miss it.
Yeah, I look forward to visiting Norwich tomorrow with, with Mrs. Donner and seeing Bright Beginnings as well. And then just mentioned briefly, because it's been touched on in a variety of ways tonight, the, I just found out myself from another parent that on Wednesday, May seventeenth, the WJCC Family Academy is going to be screening a documentary on youth mental health and having a panel discussion. And I know it's out there, I just, I hadn't heard of that one, so I'm very interested in, in hearing about that, so I wanted to, to kind of give voice to that. And then before May seventeenth, on May fourth, there's also one about vaping and other substance use. And so for anyone who hasn't heard of Family Academy, is not familiar with it, these are valuable resources, and so I just wanted to highlight those important topics since they had come up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. I just want to lead off by saying how impressed and really kind of grateful I am for this board, for all the time that you commit to getting into the schools and spending time with the administrators and the students in the classrooms and showing your support in that way. I'm just really kind of impressed as I hear each one of you talk about the time that you've spent in the schools. I know that we, for, for me, anyway, I, I don't want to get overburdened or become too burdensome on a school, a school classroom, a school in general. And so we want to make sure that they do their work, but really grateful to each one of you for the time that you've committed to doing that and representing the, the board and letting them know that we care about the, the work that they're doing. And to that end, I, around this time of year, I like to just offer a, we're almost there, to our faculty and staff that have worked so hard and diligently over the last school year. We're nearing that final push, and it's been a fantastic school year, I believe. I, I really do believe that, and we've seen a lot of successes this year, and we're seeing those things laid out before us in these reports over these last two meetings. Final push, let's finish strong, let's keep the mission ahead of us, so to speak, and remember why we're doing these things. It is, as Ms. Hunley likes to remind us, it is for the kids, it's for the families, it's for the community, these young people that we are partnering with parents and grandparents to raise and rear that they would perhaps stay here and make James City County and the city of Williamsburg an even better place to live than, than we could even imagine. So final push, let, let's finish strong. In my home, we're, we're like, we're really excited about theater season. I think, Ms. Humble, you talked about theater season last week, and so the debate for us is, is it SpongeBob the Musical or is it Freaky Friday? I think SpongeBob won, but we're really looking forward to all the festivities, looking at the upcoming events. We've got Teacher of the Year Celebration on May third. I'm not going to go in order this time, I apologize, but Teacher of the Year Celebration on May third at five at the Hennage, I think I pronounced that right, Hennage Auditorium at the Art Museum of Colonial Williamsburg. Before that, on April twenty-seventh at ten-thirty, King of Glory is going to be hosting the Support Employee of the Year Celebration. And then, of course, the board continues to do its work, our policy committee, our workforce, meeting on the twenty-sixth of April at eight-thirty virtually, and then our Student Advisory Committee meeting on the twenty-sixth of April as well, three P.M. at the Jamestown High School Media Center. Future meetings on May second, three forty-five and four thirty, respectively, our closed session and our work session, both at Central Office, Room three hundred. Then on May sixteenth, six and six-thirty, our closed session, a regular meeting, beginning at Central Office, three hundred, and resuming right here for our regular meeting. All right. Thank you all for being here this evening. Commander, thank you for joining us as well, and I, I just thank you for your time and commitment to this meeting and to our speaker as well. Thank you for, for your words with that. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.